Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the City Council meeting for Monday, July 7th, 2025, to order. At this time, we are going to begin with prayer. If we can ask Pastor Scott Graham from Real Life Church of Kankakee to come forth and lead us.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for this meeting. I thank you for what it represents for this community. I thank you for every single man and woman that serves in this meeting. I ask that you would, as they sacrifice their time and everything else that comes with positions like this, I ask that, as they feel empty, that you would be the source that fills them up, that they would walk in joy and confidence, that they are doing good and that they are seeing progress, even if they don't feel it, but that you would be the constant reminder, that you would be the loudest voice in their head, reminding them that they are doing it and that they are not just appointed, but they are also called for such a time as this. And I ask that, above all the other voices going on in this community, that your voice would be the loudest that we hear, that we would choose to lean into your voice and that your light would continue to shine bright in those that love you, serve you, and call you king. And we ask all of this in your name. Amen.
The City Council will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll move into public comment. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up, we have Dr. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor. Last time I was here, my complaint was the creek, and I was told that the creek was bought by somebody. I still don't understand how you can buy a creek, but you had told me you were going to call me back, and then when I saw you at the parade, you said, "I didn't get your number." So I left my number with your administrative assistant, and I never heard back from him, ma'am.
Yes.
So I'm like feeling like...
I got it last week, but I was not in for a couple days, so it's on the list, so...
So I'm still a Blood citizen. I was starting to feel like I was a Step citizen. So the other thing I wanted to tell you was, when I saw you at the Juneteenth, I wanted to acknowledge Alderman, Lenora Noble, and her Juneteenth team. They did a fantastic job, and I'm always emotional because of what Juneteenth represents for me and a group of people. So, my husband and I, I was in the parade, and he brought the lawn chairs, and so he's sitting there, and he says the most interesting thing to me, ma'am. He says, "Do you see what these kids doing?" I said, "What the kids doing?" He said, "Wife, they run a recon." I said, "The kids doing what?" He said, "The kids is running recon." Well, let me explain. My husband is a Vietnam Combat Marine vet, and the only assignment in his two years in Vietnam was he was a recon. So on this one incident, the helicopter lets him down, the four of them, the helicopter goes up, they go, and they walk about maybe 100 feet maybe, and they step on a man, and two of them die instantly. My husband and the other men are injured, and they had to lay low and wait for, I guess, the helicopter to come and get them and take them to, I don't know what the term is for the military hospital, I don't know. But he says, "If I don't know anything, wife, I know recon when I see it." I said, "What have you seen?" He said, "Watch them." He said, "This group right here, there's six or seven of them, two of them break off, go around this way, and they come back and they report to the team." He said, "And that one right there in the middle, they never let him separate. He the team leader. He the team leader." I said, "What?" He said, "Watch them. Watch them. Pay attention, wife, pay attention. If I don't know nothing else, I know recon when I see recon. I start watching. This is exactly what the kids are doing." He said, "Not only are the boys running recon, the girls is running recon." I said, "Well, what needs to happen?" He said, "Probably they need to tighten the perimeter." Tighten the perimeter? He said, "Back there in that back where them houses is, see, they got the fence back there." He said, "But they need to tighten the perimeter. Ain't nobody paying attention." He said, "These kids on a mission." I said, "What's the mission?" He said, "Operation Fight. Did they fight at the Juneteenth?" He said, "We gonna be gone before the mission kick on, 'cause the mission is coming." Not only that, my friend who worked corrections said the most interesting thing to me. She said, "That boy right there, see how he keeps his hand in his pocket and see how the pocket is down low and he never takes his hand out that pocket." He said, "She said, "What's in that pocket that's got it waiting like that?" Well, I can only think of one thing that would probably have his, maybe he had a lot of candy in his pocket, that's what I don't believe, but I don't think that's really true. And so, I guess I came to say, Mayor, maybe with the mayor's office, Juneteenth Committee, 'cause they do a fantastic job, I don't want it to not end or anything, maybe with the police department, maybe with the park district, maybe you all can all come together and figure out how to tighten the perimeter. If the perimeter means sending them badass kids home before they like them, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that word. The nice kids, if you might want to send them home before it get dark, if you don't have your parent out here, or if the DJ needs to announce, "We see you, we ain't having this fighting out here," because Alderman, Noble, and her team do a fantastic job, ma'am. And I just would like to see that event continue. And so, thank you for listening, and my number on the paper.
I got it right there. Next, we're going to move on to Item 5, Roll Call. City Council?
Jones?
Present.
Noble?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Cobb?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Navarez?
Here.
Marzak?
Present.
Swanson?
Tally?
Here.
Osinga?
O'Brien?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Malone Marshall?
Present.
Rude?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We do have a quorum. Next is department heads.
Kidwell?
Roach?
Here.
Rogers?
Here.
Hubel?
Present.
Landwehr?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Locas?
Here.
Newton?
Pigash?
Present.
Nelson?
Here.
Beasley?
Here.
King?
Here.
Next is Item 6. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, June 16th, 2025?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Say it.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions, comments, additions, or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are approved for Monday, June 16th, 2025. We'll move on to Item 7 now, Petitions. Item 7A?
PB 2025-6-1, An Ordinance Approving a Conditional Use Permit for Food Processing Business Located at Certain Property Located Within the City of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, 310 East Station Street.
Director King, could you enlighten us on this request that went through the Planning Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a conditional use permit for a food processing business at 310 East Station Street. The property owner that owns this property also owns the parking lot behind it as well. She currently is, what I understand, the main cook at Martinez Tacos and also prepares food for sale that's in the grocery store next door at 322, and is looking to expand that kitchen area and kind of move out of the Martinez Tacos space for that prep work, and they're going to be remodeling this property at 310 East Station Street completely inside just for that food processing used for sale at the grocery store. They did indicate that there is no interest at this time to do a catering component or a restaurant space there at all, although just to note that those are permitted uses in the district and don't require any additional parking or anything, so we did have the hearing at Planning Board on June 17th. It was recommended for approval by a vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Is there a motion to place this ordinance on first reading for passage? I'm sorry. Suspend the rules, I'm sorry. Suspend the rules for passage tonight? We have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight? We have a motion from Alderman Barron. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Rude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Malone Marshall. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Rude. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Alderman Malone Marshall. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is Item 7C.
PB 2025-6-3, An Ordinance Approving a Zoning Map Amendment to Rezone Certain Properties on North Alma Avenue, North May Avenue, and a property presently bearing the PIN 160931401014 from commercial or industrial to residential zoning.
Director King, can you give the outcome from the Planning Commission?
We heard this one at the June 17th Planning Board as well, and it was also recommended for approval by a vote of 4-0.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place an ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place an ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Tally. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Jones. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion from the City Council that they would like to combine Items 8A through 8H?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Motion to combine items is approved. Is there a motion for the approval of Items 8A through 8H?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Rude?
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones?
Aye.
Noble?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Cobb?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Navarez?
Aye.
Marzak?
Aye.
Tally?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Malone Marshall?
Aye.
Under Old Business, we continued our discussion on single-serve alcohol sales boundaries outside of the downtown business district. No updates were made. We also discussed at length the number of tobacco smoke shops in the city as well, with approximately 62 businesses, I think, at the time where these products could be purchased, which included gas stations, convenience stores, grocery stores, and smoke shops. We had a lengthy discussion on that, no action was taken at that time. Under New Business, we had a request for a new liquor license at 1370 West Court Street, located in the 3rd Ward. Mrs. Amanda Armour-Erps came and discussed her plans. No action was taken by the committee that evening, and we were asked for her to contact the Planning Department. We had a quick review of liquor license, there were two bars that have closed, and I believe two locations were under construction at that time. We had no other person comments, and the meeting adjourned at 6:24.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson.
Thank you.
Next is item 10, Report of Officers, item 10A.
City of Kinkakee bills in the amount of $807,942.11.
Is there a motion to approve the Report of Officers for the City of Kinkakee?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Report of Officers, place the money in the proper accounts and pay the bills in the amount of $807,942.11.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments regarding the bills for the City of Kinkakee? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye, but I abstain as to check 84170 to Joe's Automotive, 84173 to Kinkakee Ace Hardware, 3941 to Piggish Engineering, and 3942 to PSI Construction, in order to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
The Report of Officers for the City of Kinkakee are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills, amount of $676,884.71.
Is there a motion to approve the bills for ESU?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
The Report of Officers for the City of Kinkakee are approved. Next is item 11, 11A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 11, Administration Plan Commission of the Kinkke Municipal Code.
Director King, this is just some cleanup that you've been working on, correct, for the Planning Commission? Is there anything major you want to highlight, or?
Um, no, it, so the chapter's called Plan Commission, which is interesting to me. So, in here, it does say that we'll call it the Planning Board, which just makes it kind of clean for how we actually function, and that we also perform the duties of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which I believe consolidated a long time ago, but is not mentioned in the code anywhere. And then clarifying that we only have nine members, and that an out-of-ordinance committee, it was made very clear that they should be citizens of the city, so that they reside here in the city corporate limits.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
The ordinance is approved. Next is item 12, New Business, item 12A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 11, Administration Plan Commission of the Kinkke Municipal Code.
Director King, this is just some cleanup that you've been working on, correct, for the Planning Commission? Is there anything major you want to highlight, or?
Um, no, it, so the chapter's called Plan Commission, which is interesting to me. So, in here, it does say that we'll call it the Planning Board, which just makes it kind of clean for how we actually function, and that we also perform the duties of the zoning board of appeals, which I believe consolidated a long time ago, but is not mentioned in the code anywhere. And then clarifying that we only have nine members, and that, and out of ordinance committee, it was made very clear that they should be citizens of the city, so that they reside here in the city corporate limits.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that would allow for the passage of ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Lewis. Any questions or comments? Alderman Byrne.
Isn't, sometimes there's a Plan Commission that is, that has a different function than a Planning Board, isn't, there's sometimes a Planning Commission that puts together more of like a larger strategic plan at the outset, and then?
I don't know about that, I, the Plan Commission, the wording of the Plan Commission is, is how it's written in the state statute, given the authority to the municipalities to have them. I believe if there was a situation like that, it would probably be a Planning Board that would be doing that, instead of a plan, I think the more statutory legal way to name them as a Plan Commission, they do oftentimes, under their purview is the comprehensive plan, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Potentially, that does fall under their purview and is in our ordinance currently under their purview to review.
Okay, adds it to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
The ordinance is approved. Next is item 12B.
An ordinance amending Ordinance 2022-57, authorizing and promulgating a policy for the sale of certain city-owned improved parcels.
I'm going to turn this over to In-House Counsel Landwear, this is, has a lot to do with, a lot of business we're going to be doing here, next page here, so if you want to kind of lead us down what we're trying to do, and I'm sure you're going to be speaking quite a bit here, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is amending the ordinance to remove a property of the address of 427 South Chicago from the list of, of city earned, city-owned improved parcels, so that it can be deeded to the land bank, and that would be done under our intergovernmental agreement with them, and so we're asking to remove this from the list that is attached to the ordinance that was passed in '22. So it's just amendment.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules that allow for the passage of ordinance tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, and we have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
A second.
Second from Alderwoman Johnson, is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
The resolution is approved. Next is item 12C, we have, is appointments, we have none tonight, so we'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions, item 13A.
Resolution authorizing the assignment of, of City of Kinkakee liens on a certain residential property to the Kinkke Regional Land Bank at 643 South Myrtle Avenue.
I defer again to In-House Counsel Landwear, a lot of these next ones you're going to see is, is actually, I think, a really positive thing right now, we are moving some of our improved properties, some of our lots and everything, getting them into other people's hands, so that they can develop them, take action on to try to make sure that we don't have as many boarded up vacant or parcels that are just city-owned, so. Ms. Landwear, anything on 13A you want to highlight?
Uh, yes, Mayor, so 13A is actually just an assignment of liens, so one way that the land bank acquires property is to have the city assign liens to them so that they can foreclose on that property, so we are assigning them our lien so they can proceed, and that would be for 643 South Myrtle Avenue, that is a property they have identified as a property that, that they would like to either renovate or do whatever they're going to do with it.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution of the transferring of liens to the land bank?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman O'Brien, is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 12, uh, 13C.
Resolution authorizing the sale of improved parcels pursuant to Ordinance 2022-57, which approved the city-owned improved parcel sales policy at 466 Country Club Drive.
Ms. Landwear.
So, this is our ordinance that has a process for approving the sale of the property for a very low cost, usually dollar or something like that, to someone who is willing to improve it, so this, this applicant has gone through the process, has been approved by two committees, and they have determined that 466 Country Club Drive should be deeded to the applicant so that it can be renovated, it needs exterior and interior renovation, they plan to spend about $100,000 on it, and then will be renting it as something they continue to hold, but will rent out for improved housing in the city.
Thank you. I think this is, we're starting to make a small dent here, this was part of the plan a couple of years ago, that we have some city-owned properties, or if we get, we get title of some properties, this one has been vacant for many, many years, it was vacant when I was in Alderman, so it's going back to at least 2012 that this property's been vacant. This is getting it into a private developer's hands, they're putting their capital investment into it, and then they'll put it back on, so we're going to, we're going to win a lot of different hears, we'll get this back on the tax rolls, as you mentioned, it's probably close to six figures that'll be invested into the property, instead of demoing it, this is one that was on the demo list, they went in and said they can save it, that's a good thing, so we don't spend the money demoing it, we need housing right now, and ultimately, it's going to prove the, that little part of the appearance in that area there that just leads to public safety, that we don't have a boarded up house. So is there a motion to approve this resolution for this, for the transfer of 466 Country Club Drive?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderwoman Noble, is there any questions or comments? Alderman Jones.
Yes, ma'am, do we, uh, two things, I'm assuming, who's the developer and when is he going to get started? Because it's been there, you know, it's been there.
It's MR.
It's, um, MR Rentals of Kinkakee, they also have a roofing company.
They, um, we did check, they have probably, uh, probably somewhere in the range, I don't know 100%, about 14 to 15 properties in the city of Kinkakee, we checked with Director Nelson and Code, they are in compliance with most of their properties and keep them up, they actually own a property near there, that's why they're interested in this, they own one property already, that they were putting new windows, and they want to put some other investment into, but they thought if they could get this property, one other property, they have three properties next to each other, and they're willing to make that significant investment in that area because it benefits the other properties that they own.
It's a pretty big house, I know.
It's a very big house.
Big one, it's a real big one, I'm so glad to have it, someone's going to do it, but I would hope, because I've got a couple.
I think they're ready to start, you know, I can't sit there and say when they're going to start, but it's this year, this summer, they're anxious to get moving, they've been waiting on us to be able to transfer it to them. Okay. Alderwoman Noble, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know how they go about deciding who receives these properties.
So there, there is a program that we have that the council passed, 2022, I believe, so basically, any of these properties, it starts with an internal team within the city of Kinkakee that is made up of about six or seven of the department heads, from comptroller to planner to so on, they make a recommendation, and it's sent then to the CDA committee, which they then recommended to City Council, we also took this one through the Economic Development Committee, from a factor of, weren't sure if we could get it done in time for CDA, so there's a vetting process, there's an application that goes through the ECDA Department that they fill out, they have to provide their financials, provide what they're going to do for the, the fixing up of the home, or what they're expecting to do, in this case, they're talking about they're going to try and restore the stucco on it, if they can't do that, they may remove the stucco and do siding on the house if it's not advantageous, this is talked about, they're going to redo the plumbing, the HVAC, all the work on the house there, but it is a process that we have, so it's open to anyone in the public, we give the scoring system, we'll give priority if somebody's going to live in it, basically, we weigh it really heavy if somebody will live in it to get it to them, but they have to have the ability and show us that they can fix it up within a significant timeline, what we don't want to do is transfer the property and have somebody just sit on it for four to five years and continue to have it boarded up, so, in this case, like I said, they're anxious to get going, I expect they would start probably sometime, I don't want to put them into a commitment because they got to pull a permit and everything, but it wouldn't shock me if they started before Labor Day. Alderwoman Lewis.
Were they the only party interested in, in?
Yes, they were. We do have other properties too, available, so if anybody's interested, they can get ahold of the ECDA Department or even my office, if they have it, if somebody's interested, I think one of these things, once it gets started, people will see that there's an opportunity out there for this.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13E.
Resolution authorizing the transfer of an improved parcel pursuant to Ordinance 2020-41, which approved an intergovernmental agreement establishing the Kinkke Land Bank Authority at 427 South Chicago Avenue.
Ms. Landwear.
So, this might sound like a repeat, but basically, the ordinance that just passed taking this property out of the policy for the sale of improved parcels, will allow us to then transfer this to the land bank if the resolution passes, so we just want to transfer 427 South Chicago to the land bank for which we need your approval.
Again, this is getting this, another property into an entity that can get this into the property developer's hands or fixed up, and back on the tax rolls and some other things, so. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the transfer of 427 South Chicago Avenue?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron.
Second.
Second from Alderman O'Brien. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prude.
Aye.
12 ayes, 0 nays.
Resolution is approved. That was a lot there with the last five or six, but I'm hoping that this is the first of many, many resolutions that we do moving, going forward, as part of the initiative,
One of the conditions was that they would pursue the purchase of the triangular portion of lot that they needed for their car dealership in order to park enough cars to make it, you know, workable for them. Through a series of events, the city did acquire that property. We brought that in front of the council months ago. We actually bought it at tax sale. We just got the deed in last week, so we want to go ahead, and this man's been waiting two years for this property, so we would like to transfer it to him as soon as possible. And that is, because it's part of his conditional use requirement, it's still open, and we would just like to complete this.
So this would get the land into the business owner's hands. Part of that, testing my memory here from a few years ago when council approved this, that requires the asphalting of the parking lot, some landscape, allows them to expand their business. And a positive thing is when you're selling cars, whether they're used or not, they bring in six and a quarter percent tax. That's one percent we're going to give up, well, we're actually, yeah, one percent because we keep our cars at six and a quarter. That's money for the city and keeps that business here, so. Is there a motion to approve the resolution that would authorize the sale of the vacant parcel to this entity? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Lewis. Any questions or comments? Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13E.
Resolution authorizing the transfer of an improved parcel pursuant to ordinance 2020-41, which approved an intergovernmental agreement establishing the Kinkie Land Bank authority at 427 South Chicago Avenue.
Ms. Landower?
So this might sound like a repeat, but basically, the ordinance that just passed taking this property out of the policy for the sale of improved parcels will allow us to then transfer this to the land bank if the resolution passes. So we just want to transfer 427 South Chicago to the land bank for which we need your approval.
Again, this is getting this, another property into an entity that can get this into the property developer's hands or fixed up and back on the tax rolls and some other things, so. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the transfer of 427 South Chicago Avenue?
I move.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron.
Second.
Second from Alderman O'Brien. Any questions or comments? Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. That was a lot there with the last five or six, but I'm hoping that this is the first of many, many resolutions that we do moving, going forward. As part of the initiative, trying to get a lot of these vacant homes into other people's hands that can fix them up, and whether it's us acquiring them through the tax sales or it's properties that we currently own, but it's the first of many steps, so thank you for that tonight. Next is item 13F.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of the PIGES engineering proposal for professional design services for the city of Kinkie, Washington Avenue drainage improvements.
So there has been, I know, I believe I got an email from Alderman Navarez, I know Alderman Low Marshall, you'd reached out too. When we had that significant rain, I think it was about two weeks ago or roughly that time, I met with our city engineer. That is a problem area that does not have storm sewer anywhere up and down that road. In fact, to get storm sewer would be very, very difficult. I can let Neil speak to that based on elevations. We've even looked at maybe some solutions, were short-term solutions, or maybe making some drainage ditches or something there. This is allowing him to start the survey work to make sure that we can try to engineer something to help all the people along Washington Avenue. Neil, do you want to add anything more to that?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that this area just hasn't had any attention to it in a long time. I think these ditches are just there. I don't think there was any sort of real design to this area. So I think, you know, currently, our engagement is just do the survey work and kind of evaluate what our options even are for a solution to this area because we've got some videos of when we got that rain, and it is pretty bad. It just ponds up in the roadway and goes across the road, and, you know, it's affecting the businesses, so we want to do right by them and take a look at what options we have to fix the problem, short and long term, and this will allow us to kind of start that process, so.
So Neil provided a proposal, and we want to make sure we got this as quick as possible onto council agenda, so that's why you have it before you tonight. So we're asking for a approval of the resolution to enter into the professional service agreements to start the survey work.
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Low Marshall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Prude. Any questions or comments? Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. Next is item 13G.
Resolution authorizing the renewal of an extended-term master power supply agreement between the city of Kinkie and MC Squared Energy Services LLC.
So I'm going to ask you, ex-city manager Kubo, to talk about this. This was something that we had a deadline on, and, but this is a program that we worked on the last few years, so, city manager, if you want to kind of go over this?
Thank you, Mayor. So as many of you know, we've worked within aggregation programs for a long time when it comes to energy. Energy, electricity, not only for our residents, but also for things like our stone station, our streetlights, our some street station and our streetlights and those items. This one is for residents. These aggregation programs go back as long as I know here at the city to at least like 2010, and might have been longer than that. I'm not for sure about that, but I know in that era, that's when at least we were for sure involved in this and have been involved ever since. The beauty of an aggregation program is that our residents are getting a locked-in rate for their electricity that is, that is good for the term of whatever agreement we go into, and it's an economy of scales benefit. So as you know, out in the marketplace, when energy, I actually worked for a power company when everything went through deregulation, and what happened then, we used to all pay, you know, back in the eighties and nineties, we all paid the same rate from the same company, right? Then deregulation came through, and when that happened, then, you know, there's all kinds of people who got into the electricity marketplace. Well, that's great, and you can shop your own electricity if you wish to, and you still can do that, but as you know, we have a lot of people here in our community, all communities do, that maybe don't fully understand this marketplace, and maybe they don't understand how to broker their own electricity, and maybe they get actually taken by someone who's not doing it for the right reasons and ends up paying exorbitant amounts of money. This is a way we protect our residents, and we say, here's your baseline rate. This agreement happens to be with MC Squared Two, who we've worked with before. They also provide a community benefits amount for our city, so we can go and do other things here, but that rate ties exactly to the amount that ComEd is offering, so that our residents are protected. And like I said, as always, they can go and they can still shop their energy if they wish to and opt out, but for most residents and for most situations, it is in your best interest to go with the amount that the municipality has negotiated upon your behalf, like we're doing here tonight. These agreements and timeframes never align perfectly with a city council meeting. They haven't the whole time I've worked here. So unfortunately, we usually have to go with these very quickly. They come up, and then we have to make a decision, and then we come back to you all. If we can on the preside, we do, but generally speaking, we have to ratify it afterwards, which is what we're doing right now.
And then this also has a community benefit agreement with it too. Last year, I believe it was $12,000.
Correct.
It's been up for a two-year period, correct?
Correct, and it's $30,000 now.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the renewal of the extended term of the master supply agreement?
So moved.
Well, a motion from Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second from Alderman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved. We do have a need for a short executive session tonight under 5ILCS 122, C11, pending or imminent litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, I heard Alderman Johnson for first, and then there was a second from Alderman Tully. Wokal?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Rude.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, we are now out of executive session. Is there a motion to return to open session?
No move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderwoman Noble. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb's.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Alon Marshall.
Aye.
Ruth.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays.
Okay, we do have a quorum. We have no action resulting from executive session, so we'll move on to item seventeen, city council member comments. Alderman Tully.
Mayor, I've already brought this up, but I want to publicly acknowledge how exciting it is for some things to be actually happening in the third ward, and we have been the first ward to have some street repairs done with the new piece of equipment. I, in fact, called James and complimented him and his crew on what they're able to do, and I look forward to a lot of really good repair work happening around the city. In addition to that, I'm also announcing that the third ward will be hosting a meeting this Wednesday, July ninth, at six o'clock. We will be meeting at Saint Mark's United Methodist Church.
Thank you, sir. Alderwoman Alon Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that we'll be participating in the Party in the Parks with the Park District for our back-to-school supply giveaway. That'll be on August the thirteenth at Washington Park from four PM to seven PM. Right now, we are taking donations, and we would like to have as many volunteers to help us pass out the school supplies. Thank you.
Alderman Proudie.
Mayor, I just want to make a couple of comments about the Juneteenth parade. I was one of the drivers in the parade, and one of the things that I've seen that hopefully we can improve on, actually coming down Court Street, there was traffic coming down the one side while we was passing out candy and stuff. So I think that we should have that street closure a lot quicker, because I seen a lot of cars that could have hit those kids coming down that street as we was coming down in the parade. So I think that we should make sure that that street is closed during the parade time, making sure that no cars can come down as we coming down Court Street. The second thing that I'd like to acknowledge is what Dr. Walker talked about. Two years in a row, we had to shut down the park because of fights going on, and so the fireworks was with really nobody hitting the park. So I think that we need to become proactive. I mean, usually when we had these fests, we had police cars if they wasn't doing nothing but sitting up in the park. We had a little policeman walking in the park so we could make it a lot safer when we have the Juneteenth celebration, because again, two years in a row, we had to go through this. So I think that we should be a little bit more proactive and have police in the park walking. I understand sometimes we don't have so many on duty, but we have to figure out something to make sure that happens. And again, even if we got patrol cars sitting in the park, I think that'd be a lot safer. Thank you.
Yes, to say that the Juneteenth was a success, I do. But I also talked later with the police department, and we have agreed to make arrangements and to all get together on the planning of this event so that, you know, we can work on making it the best that it can be. We have talked about it. We have acknowledged that there may be a slight problem here, so let's see what we can do about fixing it. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just a reminder that next Monday, week from tonight, we have Budget Committee meeting at five thirty. Among the items on the agenda will be a discussion of the budget. We also have a public hearing on the budget that night in anticipation of final reading of budget two weeks from tonight, on the twenty-first of July. Thank you.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Thank you. We will have license and franchise this Thursday in Chamber Com-- here, at five thirty.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. Tomorrow night, we will have public safety, excuse me, here in the chambers at five, at five thirty. Also, it was a great-- Juneteenth was pretty good. We had a couple of things, and I was really, really commending Alderwoman Noble on the job that she did and her people putting it on. You know, like I said, it was really, really good. And I do, you know, we talked about how the security will be better next year, but I was very, very proud for the whole day. I'm telling you, that was one of the best days in the last little bit. You know, I'm laughing because I called, called my chief, and because we were going so good, someone that said, "Man, what you haven't arrived?" Chief, I was about to fuss at you, because when I came back to the park, I saw, I said, like he said, the cavalry. I said, "Man, I just wanted a couple of people to drive around." So, you know, they say we had a little incident, but that was it. But because truly, we had a wonderful time in the park that day. Also, you know, I know we had the shooting in the seventeen-hundred block of Maple, and, you know, I'll see people all the time talking about, you know, what goes on in Kankakee. Well, you know, I'm always proud of the seven, well, we never get nervous. And we talked to the owner of it. We're good, you know, young kids got into it. But it's safe. I had to go in there and make sure that the tacos was good, you know, and everything else. The area was safe, so, you know, we don't run from nothing. It was a great, it was a great time. Thank KPD and County that came out and took care of the business. And it's really, you know, we're in a good place over there, so we're good over on the seventeen-hundred block. We definitely got to get the guns off the street. The cops are doing a tremendous job working to get it done, and I want to commend them for the work that they do. Also, the security. I heard about the meeting, Mayor. I was excited. I heard you're gonna put your foot down, which is good. Behind Ricky Rocket, somebody tried to say it was Ricky Rocket's fault, but no, it's not Ricky Rocket's fault. That we have issues that we need to address. And we got a meeting scheduled, I believe, next week on the fifteenth, and behind there, and I heard what you want to do, but I hope that they done a tremendous job, because two o'clock the other night, after I finish, you know, getting my rest, I came out and I wanted to see how it would look in the middle of the night. They had security back there, and there was no cars, believe it or not, that was back there that night, but it was good. So I guess you put your foot down, and I'm hoping that it goes well, because we don't want one hundred and thirty residents displace. But I do understand what chief and different parts of our city and county is dealing with. So, you know, we're talking to the constituents. I'm gonna talk again next week. We're gonna have serious conversations. No, we don't, I don't want to see it shut down. I love the people, I'll just say it, no, because I believe we can do better. Hopefully we can make a few arrests, but we ain't gonna make no arrests. But people know that it sounds like you're gonna be serious, and we're gonna be serious about trying to bring crime down back there. So that's something that we're gonna talk, we're gonna talk about and work with them as they continue to want to get better as a partner back there. Also, the last thing that this, we got going this weekend, on behalf of all the churches in the Kankakee vicinity, we're having our church gathering fun, whichever name that they had to gather in the church, down at Bird Park, starting at one o'clock to five o'clock on this Saturday coming. Pastor Santos and Community Church are holding this, and everybody that want to be there, come on out. They're gonna have a lot of singing, games, everything for the kids and stuff will be out there. So we're excited. They're putting it on, the bands, everybody that plays music is gonna be there. So if y'all can, come on out. It'll get you ready for Merchant Street Fest, all right? So preamble for Merchant Street. So come on out this weekend. We're looking for the mayor, so he can come out there and, you know.
I'm out of town.
All right.
Don't tell anybody.
I got you, all right. But that's the thing, I am excited. But thank y'all so much again for tonight, and we look to see everybody this weekend.
Alderman Marzak.
Just want to say, there's a few peddlers that are still out there. Stacy does an awesome job of getting us a list, but by the time I had a conversation with the individual, there was three of them. By the time they left and fired up the city computer, I noticed that they weren't on the list, but they skedaddled. So if you memorize that list, it changes daily. But to my knowledge, there's only one energy company right now, but there was three of them. I told them, I says, you know, "Do you have a city permit?" And of course, he said, "Yes, it's in the car." But I said, "You know, you're supposed to have it on you." So keep your eyes open.
Any other alderperson comments? Department head comments. Director King.
Yeah, we have a planning board on Tuesday. We only have two things on the agenda. We had a conditional use, two oh five North Fairmont, but it's gonna get continued because they had some issues with public noticing. And then I'm putting the plat, the final plat back on for a quick trip. They've been through a long engineering review process. We're pretty close to the end, would you say? Yeah. And so that approval for the final plat that went to Planning Board originally is almost a year old, I think, now. So it needs to be acted on within ninety days by the council, so we're hoping to tee that up and have that ready for council once we're all through engineering.
Chief Kidwell.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to ask the council and the community to keep Don McCarty and his family in your prayers. He lost his mother and father and brother, so we grieve for him, and I just want everybody to keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
A couple reminders for events. We do have the Neighborhood Cookout at Steve Hunter Park on Saturday, July nineteenth, from one to four PM. This is our adjustment to our neighborhood walks. As you know, those have kind of transitioned into more of this event-based community gathering. So we will be walking the neighborhoods in the next few weeks to pass out some door hangers that any of the residents in that neighborhood can bring in and enter into a raffle at the event. So we are still gonna be going door-to-door to promote the event, but this is gonna be our opportunity to get all of the community resource information that we would normally go door-to-door to the event. So we have a lot of vendors that are gonna be there, but we also, those vendors that aren't able to attend, we will have the bags that we would normally give on the neighborhood walks available for residents to make sure that they have access to all that information. So again, that is Saturday, July nineteenth, from one to four at Steve Hunter Park. And then the other event is our ECDA luncheon. So you all should have received an invitation in your city mailbox and hopefully in your email soon. But that is July twenty-fourth from eleven to one at The Majestic. Our speaker this year, our keynote speaker, is Zachary Benedict, and he is someone that we've encountered a couple different times at some economic development trainings, and he does a great job of creating a true mental picture for you all about what our heart is at ECDA, to see that community and economic development kind of blend into a vibrant community. So I'd encourage you to mark your calendars for that and be in attendance and get to hear updates about our department. I know you guys get it from the committees and emails and things, but getting to see that and some honored awards being given away as well. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one.
For call.
I just want to address the IML packet that I passed out to the aldermen and alderwomen tonight. It's, there's four pages. The first two pages just let you know information about the hotel and parking and any reimbursements that are available to you. And then the last two pages are what you fill out and get back to me by the twenty-eighth, okay? And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Any other department heads? Okay. I will move on to nineteen mayor's update. I just had a few things kind of want to go through. Chief Kidwell, thank you for talking about Officer McCarty and his family. Also, I think we did send out information, everybody, to keep Director Brewer Watson in your prayers. Her father passed last week also. They had his services this past weekend, so she's off a little bit with her bereavement and that. I want to give an update just real quick on the software that the council approved, the Tyler software that works with adjudication, code departments. It'll be with DPW, a lot of departments. I want to give a shout out to Director King. She's really been quarterbacking that. There was several meetings, was it the week before last? I don't know. There was meetings multiple times with all the departments and everything. It's coming along. It's a lot of work, but we can start to see some of the, I think it's gonna be a really tangible piece that's gonna really help for the city. You can see how this is gonna come together. There's still a lot of work to go before we basically can start to use it. It'll be 2026, but when we get it up and running, it'll be very good internally, but I think it's gonna be very good for the public. I think they're gonna like it. It'll be simple for them to figure out what they need to do for permitting and different things. So wanted to give a update on the East River Walk. I think most of you know, last week, they completed the relocation of all the muscles. I believe the number was, there was a contest at the farmer's market. They moved three hundred and forty-six muscles. It's a lot like the witness protection program. They will not tell us where they're at or where they went. So where those have been moved to, we do not know, but they did say of the three hundred and forty-six, twenty-seven were part of the states endangered list. So those have all been moved. If you had not heard, you would think we would have started construction today, but we were thrown another hurdle in a way. DNR said that we cannot begin construction now till August first because of the Red River Horse. And we did make several calls, as we talked about before, and I was notified about a week ago that the answer is a hard no. So I'm talking to the contractor. We won't be able to do anything till August first, but they did tell us that they will start to mobilize and get set up to be going as soon as we can get that date to us. All our businesses and community out there should have received the Rikada sponsorship packets now, so if you're talking to the people. We're still looking for sponsorships. They're starting to come in. We're starting to get a lot of information on the regard, and so it should be a big event this year. A little change this year, Friday will be free. We're not charging for the practice rounds, just charging for the qualifying rounds on Saturday and for the finals races on Sunday. Cities United is in town, I think, tonight. That organization will be here for the next two and a half days, all day tomorrow, all day Wednesday, and Friday, Thursday morning. Everybody should have gotten some information about that with different meetings. They'll be meeting with community stakeholders, the city internally, U.S. elected officials. There's some dinners, there's some meet and greets, but they're gonna basically take their roadmap academy that they teach everyone, and they're gonna bring it here and start to educate and give us ideas of how we can help curb violence within the city of Kankakee and what they're doing, what's working in other areas and what's not working and helping. While we're on that topic, obviously, everybody should have been, at least as elected officials, you would have been notified yesterday, we did have the shooting yesterday. We almost felt like we got through the whole holiday weekend, not quite. But I will say this, I know announcement has been made yet. There's still an investigation going on, but I will say that due to technology and some different things, the city has a really good understanding of, the KBD has a good understanding of what's happening and what's going on there. So you'll get further updates as things come out on that. Lot there. Also saw, just wanted to kind of update too. There were some discussions about railroad crossings in the north of Court Street. If you do remember, we do have funding, in fact, Neil, if you can talk about that real quick. Skyler Avenue, we have, I believe it's a $600,000 grant that will not only fix the Skyler Avenue crossing there, also extend the Skyler Avenue. We're working in to part of that engineering to extend the Skyler Avenue streetscape all the way to the railroad. But Neil, that's probably a project, once all the permitting and everything get done, that's probably a twenty-sixth project, correct?
We are still waiting on the grant agreement from IDOT on that grant. So I've followed up with them several times, and so that's, that's the hangup right now on that project. But you're correct, that includes the crossing surface as well as the roadway approaches.
There is some other streets, obviously, that are very bad, too. Ultimately, it is the railroad's responsibility. We're lucky we got a grant here to help the railroad. Even Hobby Avenue, if you think about those, those crossings were done because of part of being part of the MPO. There is, you know, the best I can sit there and say is, working with railroads can be very difficult. They probably might be the most powerful organization in the United States of America, because they're the original crossroads of America. Cities built around railroads. They have the easements. We basically are infringing on their rights versus them infringing on our rights. There are phone numbers that residents can call and complain about the tracks, and we do. We tell them that they need to work with it. We have, they have given us a little bit of permission to work with DPW. James and his crew has gone out and tried to put some asphalt in there that wouldn't ruin the tracks for the train crossings, but we are trying to do that to make it as stable as possible and trying to find money for it, but it is very difficult. Neil, you had another question?
Well, just to support your point, Mayor, when we did the Hobby Avenue project through title searches, the city didn't even have dedicated right-of-way through the KBNS railroad. So we had to go and ask them for an easement for our existing road on their right-of-way. So the mayor's correct that a lot of times, these railroads existed long before the roads were there. The roads got put in willy-nilly, and sometimes we run into these situations where the municipality doesn't even have rights to have a crossing there. So that, that does happen. So.
But we are looking into it. We acknowledge that it is a problem, but it's, it's not an easy cure, an easy fix, but we are looking into it. So, and working with DPW, trying to make it smooth. We put up some signs for rough crossings, just to kind of warn cars that, you know, it's a difficult crossing, but it's not an easy fix. But Skyler Avenue will be one that we expect will be taken care of. I think that's all I have. We will have a full agenda on July twenty-first. As Alderman O'Brien mentioned, we'll be bringing budget forth that night, and we'll have a lot of other things. So, and we'll, we'll have some, a lot of documentation that night to sell. With that, it is now eight twenty-eight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Alon Marshall. We have a second from Alderman Tully. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.